Welcome to the school committee regular meeting of May 11th, 2011. Everyone is present except Mr. Marchese, who will not be with us this evening. Linda, thank you. Our first item of business is approval of items by consensus.
Good evening, everyone. There are three items on the agenda for approval by consensus. Approval of the minutes of April 27th, approval of the out-of-state field trip, the high school Costa Rica trip, which is a trip that they go on every two years, and transmitting of the treasury warrants. And I'm going to do those in two parts. The first one, I'll do all but payroll, so you can vote on that, and then we'll do payroll. L-69, L-70, L-71, G-423, G-424, R-232, R-233, and FS-18.
Thank you. Before we do the minutes, everyone was present for those minutes, right? At the last meeting? Okay. I would entertain a motion for the three items on the consent agenda.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes, Mr. Vale?
I have just one comment on the minutes, so I don't know if you want to take them separately.
Okay, let's do the -- we'll take the approval of the minutes of April 27th separately. Okay, so we'll do that one first.
Okay. Well, I don't know if it's important or not, but on page five, under the town meeting warrant articles, it says Article 9 was the installation of a high-energy furnace. To me, that means a furnace that's not very efficient and consumes a lot of energy as opposed to a furnace which is highly energy-efficient. And it's not that important, but I read it.
You picked up on someone else, Mike.
We'll correct it.
Right, so it should be a highly energy-efficient furnace at the Batwell School.
Energy-efficient, good. So I'll entertain a motion to pass the -- to approve the minutes with that correction, please. Mr. Vale?
I'll move -- did you move it or? I'll move that the minutes as amended be passed.
Good, thank you. Second, Mr. Hayes? Okay. All those in favor? Unanimous. Linda? All right, and now I'd entertain a motion for the out-of-state field trip and the transmitting of the treasury warrant.
Excluding payroll.
Excluding payroll. Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the out-of-state field trip, high school Costa Rica, and the transmitting of the treasury warrants except for the payroll.
Second, Dr. Quick? Okay. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Linda. And now we'll have one more. Mrs. Benton?
Recommend approval of the payroll for 4/27.
Do we have a second? Do we have a motion to approve the payroll for 4/27? Mr. Hayes?
I'll make the motion that we approve the payroll for 4/27/11.
Okay, do we have a second? Dr. Quick? Good. All those in favor? With one, two, three, four, five, with one extension. Mrs. Carroll? All right, excellent. Thank you. Oh, now we have a very pleasant, pleasant thing to do. Mrs. Benton?
Should we do the report, their report first or the presentation first?
I think their report.
Yeah, why don't you do your report first, and then you can --
Get a presentation.
Katie and John, welcome.
In preparation for the senior prom, which will be this Friday, May 13, the SAD Club, Students Against Destructive Decisions, put on a mock car crash yesterday. The idea is to introduce those who are going to be attending the senior prom to what it would be like for them, their friends and their family, if they were to be in a car crash. It is meant to discourage drunk driving and other reckless decisions. Also relating to senior events, senior, the last day for seniors is the 20th, and finals will be over by the 25th. The senior banquet is on May 31st from 6:30 to 7:30, and graduation is on June 5th. The WHS lamp lighters will be performing Macbeth in the WHS auditorium on May 19th, 20th, and 21st from 7 to 8. And on Tuesday, May 24th, is the underclassmen awards, held in the high school gymnasium. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairperson, tonight is an evening when we have to say farewell to our school committee reps and to thank them for the work that they've done this year. I just want to acknowledge earlier today, I had the pleasure of being with Katie and her family at the Merrimack Superintendent Association's annual luncheon to celebrate the top students in each of our communities, and was thrilled that Katie represented us. Lyndon Hayes was also to be there, he unfortunately could not attend, but what was quite fascinating to me and impressive was the depth and breadth of the background of all of the seniors that were honored this afternoon. It was making me extremely proud to be part of the Merrimack Valley Association, and I think I counted five going to Harvard?
I think six.
Six. Was it six? Okay, five, yes, six in the group going to Harvard. Just another community, Chelmsford, the top two students are both going to MIT. I mean, it was phenomenal to hear where these Stanford, Brown, Yale. What was really wonderful was to bring all of these young scholars and their families together to celebrate their accomplishments. And as Dr. Conti and Dr. McGrath, who addressed the group, both said, you know, this is just the first 18 and 19 years of their lives, and we can't wait to see what kind of accomplishments that they are going to make in the years to come. And I'm so proud of the way Wilmington was represented. So on behalf of the school committee, first Katie, then I'll do John. Katie, we want to thank you for adding to the long list of volunteer jobs that you have done, including coming to school committee this year, which we know is a sacrifice because we know that homework is an issue at the high school, which we're going to talk about later, but -- and the pressures that we put on all of you, and yet you seem to do everything with such class and without ever getting rattled. I don't know if you do at home, I don't want to know, Mom and Dad, but I want to acknowledge the incredible work that your parents have done in raising you the way that they have because you truly are an incredible ambassador for Wilmington Public Schools, and we want to wish you well. So I'd like to invite you up to accept a little gift from the school committee. Can I have you go around front so we can take a picture? Oh, hey, come up this way, you just can't go that way.
Having done some volunteer work with Katie at the bookstore next door, I have to say, she's so wonderful out in the community and doing so many great things. Congratulations. Thank you so much, we appreciate it. And this means she's going to Harvard, in case people didn't get that. We appreciate everything you've done.
Although John hasn't been in as many meetings, he's also responsible for being the heir of the high school. And in these jobs, this job is, as a school committee representative, is to find out what's going on at the high school and hear the issues. And he has been diligent, Mr. Tracy told me, all year long, making sure that he covered what was going on at the high school and collected the information. Again, another outstanding Wilmington High student who has represented us well in the community, volunteer work, sports, activities. I was looking at their resumes today, they're too numerous to mention, but we want to thank you, John, and wish you well next year, and hope that you will continue to be in touch with us.
You can clap, everyone.
Is the thing attached still?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, I really appreciate everything you've done.
About what's that?
I can't wait to have it.
Ready? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Tracy is now soliciting representatives for next year, and actually, Mr. Hayes and I were at the second visioning session the other day, and there were some wonderful underclassmen that were very articulate, and we are inviting two of those members that were there to see if they are willing to do it, so.
Wow, that's excellent.
Second thing on the superintendent's report, first of all, I would just like to again thank the Burlington Public Schools for co-hosting Race to Nowhere with Wilmington a week ago or two weeks ago, which seems like yesterday, which has been going on. But I was truly impressed with the representation from Wilmington with the students and staff, parents, and school committee, and I thought it was a very compelling movie. And I think it's just the beginning, hopefully, of a conversation that we will have over the next year. I've asked Mr. Tracy to chair a committee in the fall to look at stress at the high school and what kinds of stress we're placing on students. And I want the committee composed of students, staff, and parents, and obviously, school committee representatives, but I also want us to invite back a couple of parents whose children have graduated this year. Because we had a couple of parents in the audience at Race to Nowhere whose only child, you know, is, or last child is leaving Wilmington and who were very moved by the movie. I've heard from, I think I've heard from 22 people, which is terrific.
Oh, my goodness.
So the topic was timely.
Who attended the meeting?
Yes, who attended the movie.
Oh, my gosh.
And so I'd like us to look at what's happening at Wilmington High School. Pleased to announce that at the curriculum, elementary curriculum council meeting on Friday, it's already on our agenda to discuss homework at the elementary level. Principals clearly heard the message and want to relook at our policy on homework at our level. So I -- do you know if school committee members had any thoughts on it to date?
Robert, you look like you're ready to go.
Well, I just wanted to thank Superintendent Benton and the superintendent over in Burlington for pulling this all together. I thought it was a wonderful film, and it was very powerful. And what I did afterwards is I ran back home and grabbed my 500-page committee policy book, and I was flipping through the pages, and I found our homework policy, Policy IKB, and it's about four pages long, and I think this is definitely something that maybe the policy subcommittee will want to look at, especially after Mr. Tracy's committee in the fall comes up with some findings. But I will say that the movie and the handouts recommended that there only be two hours of homework a night for a high school student, one hour of homework a night for a middle school student, and no homework for any elementary students. And I think that's something very interesting. They also talked about not giving homework during, you know, vacations, not giving homework on the weekends. So those are all things that I think we should seriously be thinking about, and I'm glad to hear that the principals are already discussing it. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vale?
I would say, I'm very interested in some of the points made by the movie, as well as ongoing considerations for education and education reform nationally, and especially as, and I've mentioned this at a bunch of times at a number of different committee meetings, you know, we're in a global economy and vis-à-vis what policies and what other countries are doing. As everyone looks at this, and clearly, we are in a highly competitive global environment, and we need to be thinking clearly and strategically about where the pupils in Wilmington Public Schools are going to go and how they're going to compete in that economy over the years. I would love to see some of these things come up, obviously through the policy subcommittee, but also I think it's part of, part and parcel of perhaps what we're going to be putting together in the strategic planning process to look out forward on some things. And I just, I think these are all great questions, and we need to figure out how to, one, make sure that we're using the time that we have with the kids most effectively to the greatest impact while they're in our charge, and two, be taking hard looks at how the school day is organized, what, you know, whether they have enough time in school, whether the school year should be lengthened.
You're slicking that up.
Yeah. Well, you know.
That's interesting.
Right, well, Americans spend less time in school per day and fewer days in school per year compared to almost any other industrialized country. So these are very tough questions, and it's intertwined with, obviously, money and contracts and state law and all kinds of things, but we should be not afraid to challenge the accepted system that's been passed down over the years because, looking out 10 or 15 years, it might not be the best model for achieving the results we need to achieve. And, you know, I think everything should be on the table through this process, including homework and, you know, class sizes and everything else.
Excellent. Dr. Quick?
In fact, I think during the movie, they did mention that. They did mention that other countries who do excel in comparison to Americans, American children and academics, some of these countries, and I don't know which specific ones by name, but they don't have any homework. You know, and I'm not saying that that's the answer, but the one thing that the movie did for me as a parent, whose child is not at that point yet, but it, you know, kind of stresses you out just thinking about it, is the fact that it puts everything into perspective. Because unfortunately nowadays, you have, college educations are almost the price of a house. You know, so you have these parents that only want the best for their children, but in so doing, they're pushing them as much as our school system is pushing them. And I think that's, you know, and you come from a time where kids are, you know, everybody's equal, then all of a sudden, you're pushing them, pushing them, pushing them, and it's no wonder the stress levels, and you're seeing more kids with the depression issues because, you know, you go from one extreme to another. And, you know, and obviously, that has to change, but we have to do it in a way that, you know, I think it's not just on a, you know, on a smaller level, but we have to, you know, I'm hoping that legislators see these types of things because they're the ones who make a lot of the rules that are, unfortunately, that our teachers have to teach by. So I think it has to be at both levels.
Yes, Mrs. Carroll?
I would love to get a viewing around here, too, in Wilmington, for the people that could not go to Burlington. I mean, for parents and for teachers, especially parents. I mean, I know myself, I'm out straight every day, you know, and that movie was like, wow, okay, you know, it's all right if we take tonight off from lacrosse or something, you know? It's like, you know, all right, you know? So I would love to have more parents see it.
That segues right into my comments, because as a teacher of honors classes for years at Medford High School, my biggest problem was the parents. Because my rules were, seriously, as far as homework, my rules were, I never, ever gave homework over a weekend, like a Friday due a Monday. I did Thursday to Tuesday, or I did Friday to Wednesday. And I always gave them, it would be like a little project or whatever they were working on, but I always gave them the weekends, they could decide when they would do it. Never, ever gave them homework on vacations. I had to fight with parents who would come in and blast me for not having their kids weren't going to be prepared, and I would be like, your kids work so hard, I gave so much work, I had a reputation for giving a lot of work, they had so much work, so they weren't being cheated at all, they had the work during the school year. They needed their vacations, they needed to get themselves reorganized and anything. And so I think that if we're going to go in this route and really talk about homework, we have to keep the parents informed the whole way, and we have to give them justifications for the idea that you do not have to have homework every night, especially when you hear of first graders and second graders crying at night trying to get homework done, and it's happening in our school system, just like it's happening in any school system, refusing to read, refusing to do certain things because that's the way they can control it, then I'm so thrilled that we're discussing this and that this is going to go forward. And I'm also thrilled that Wilmington and Burlington combined to do that. That was a wonderful evening for anyone who was there to see the two superintendents running with the --
That's fine.
They were excellent, and there were so many people there, it was really, there were many more people than I ever expected to be there. So I thought it was a really great, successful evening.
So stay tuned.
Thank you so much, we definitely will.
And lastly, I just would like to report to the group that the Wilmington Teachers' Association voted to accept the successor agreement negotiated between the Wilmington Teachers' Association and the Wilmington School Committee Teachers Negotiations Subcommittee. I want to thank Mr. Marchese and Mr. Roger, who were part of the committee.
And should we announce this as a three-year?
This is a three-year contract.
Three-year contract.
That was voted on by the school committee on April 27th, executive session meeting.
And since I wasn't involved, I'd like to say congratulations to all of you who worked for it. That was no mean feat, that was a mean feat to get that finished and done, and not to have, it's so hard in this day and age, and for it to go through, you, somebody did a lot of work on there. So really, on behalf of the town, thank you very much.
Both sides.
Both sides, absolutely, both sides.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next item of business is all business.
We have two policies.
Yep.
That's second reading, if the school committee can either decide to vote or do a third reading. I did not get any, Mr. Hayes, did you get any? Mr. Vale, did you hear from anybody about concerns?
I didn't hear from anyone, but I actually have a couple of remarks on one of them. So if we can take them separately, but my comments are relating to animals in school.
Okay, so then can we do, we'll do the admission of transfer students, because that's first on here. Could we have a motion to approve the admission of transfer students policy, and then we'll have a discussion? Mr. Hayes?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, I move that we approve the admission of transfer students policy.
And do we have a second? Dr. Quick? Thank you. Questions and comments? No, it's well put together, so we're all set. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. All right, and I recommend, I'll accept a motion to approve the animals in school policy. Do we have a motion? I move to approve the animals in school policy. Thank you, Mrs. Carroll. Do we have a second? Dr. Quick? Thank you. Questions and comments? Mr. Vale?
Sure. Some of them are just sort of cleanup edits that I think just, I had a hard time almost following because of the way it's spaced, and there's an asterisk and a bunch of other things, but as a sort of a substantive matter, on the first, on the first paragraph, it says that, basically, that the principal of each school can decide when an animal's going to be allowed in school or not. And then on the second page, it says, exceptions may be made with the prior approval of the superintendent of schools. So for consistency's sake, I was just wondering whether the second one should be changed to principal, or whether we should have superintendents of schools or principal. I don't know if everyone's following, but under the asterisk exception, it says, maybe eight lines down from the top, exceptions may be made with the prior approval of superintendent of schools. Two lines down from that, right under service animals, where it's bold, it says service animals, guide, or assistance dogs. First of all, there's some weird fonting going on.
Yeah, it's got to go on a template anyway, once it's viewed.
Yeah, which is one of those cleanup kind of things that I don't want to get into, but then it says the school committee does not permit discrimination. I'm wondering if it's, should be the school district does not permit discrimination. And then, other than sort of tightening up, there's a bunch of places where it says ifs, and there's extra spaces stuck and things. If you come down further, there's three bullets in a row, and you see PUU, wheelchairs, and I, probably that should be pull, or it's probably not PUU, at any rate. And there's some extraneous punctuation kind of, kind of in various places, so. But those are the sort of the more substantive comments that I had on this particular policy.
Yes, it is true.
Just regarding the, you know, the funny spacing and whatnot, I think what probably happened was, this was copy and pasted from a PDF file, and sometimes when you do that, strange things will happen. And so I had assumed that that would have been cleaned up once we actually made this, you know, policy and put it in the handbook. Regarding, you know, Mr. Vale's two substantive points, I'm fine saying the school district does not permit discrimination, that's fine. And then regarding making it consistent between superintendent and principals, I would be fine with that as well. What I think specifically, though, under exception, guide, you know, guide hearing, other service dogs or law enforcement dogs, that's where I think the exception, that's what the exception is referring to. Exceptions may be made with the prior approval of the superintendent of schools, I think in relation to guide hearing and other service dogs or law enforcement dogs. That's where I, you know what I mean?
Right.
But.
And I think frankly, that it should be the superintendent on the law enforcement dogs.
Sure. And maybe it just needs to be cleaned up a little bit, which is that, I mean, I sort of read it to be, the first paragraph is like the principal, if the science teacher's going to bring in Mr. Zoo for a day-long demonstration, right, the principal would sign off on that, right? If it's some ongoing matter where a student is bringing, do I say it, a miniature horse to school?
I knew that was going to be the example.
Every single day, then that would be, I guess, maybe approval of the superintendent plus the principal, you know, whose school that service animal would be attending every single day. Clearly, on an emergency, if you're authorizing law enforcement dogs to come in and do a sweep or something, that, you know, that's probably is under the ballywick of the superintendent to sign off on that. So there's, there were just sort of a couple of questions where I was sort of trying to think through how to sort of actually implement this and how to kind of read it, and it was raising some questions in my own mind, and that's where I was sort of trying to point out some of the.
I'll take a stab at rewriting it, and then send it to the subcommittee, and then you bring it back.
Sure.
Okay, so this will be worked on a little more. Thank you, Mr. Vale. All right. Oh, so the next item of all business is school committee assignments. I had lost it. I'll just read down these committees and just make sure that people are happy with their committee. Our first committee with the policy subcommittee, Mr. Vale and Mr. Hayes, I believe you both would like to maintain those.
Sure, yes.
The sick bank subcommittee, right now is myself and Mr. Hayes, and is there anyone else who wants to? Mr. Hayes isn't going to be doing that, so, Mrs. Bonish, that would be great. The technology task force, this worked out great, Mr. Vale, because Mrs. Bonish is interested in that. So you had, we're thinking that would be one that you could give up?
Sure.
That's great. And Mr. Hayes will stay on that one. I'm not sure what to do about school committee representatives and master plan committee. The master plan hasn't met in two or three years, but I figure we'll just, Mr. Marchese is our representative, and so if he doesn't mind, we'll just keep him on there in case they do meet again. The school committee representative to strategic plan advisory committee, in effect, that's not happening, the change, Mrs. Benton has changed the process?
No, no, we're going to be coming back to you. What we're doing is an internal draft.
Oh, all right, I misunderstood.
And then we're going to bring the committee together, because I've got some special aid PAC representatives on the committee as well, so that will be happening.
Oh, okay. So are you still interested in that, Mr. Vale?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so that would be myself, you, and myself. Okay, school committee representative to the Wilmington Educational Foundation Board of Directors is Dr. Quick. You still like that? To the school health advisory committee, see you get doctor in front of your name. They're automatics. They're automatics. There you go. The school committee representative to the CPAC, Mrs. Carroll, that's still a good one. School committee negotiations, a Subcommittee for Educational Assistance, Mr. Vale?
That's fine, or I'm happy to be on a different negotiating Subcommittee as you. I'm not sure what's coming up, I'm not sure what the schedule of negotiations is at this point.
I know, I don't think...
Mr. Jero, science nurses.
Cafeteria is the next, is the only other one that's up, who will be up.
Cafeteria, okay. We'll hold off, we'll know that we've...
Do you want to stay on the assistant?
Yeah, that's fine. I was just, I'm just saying, I'm not sure what's going to happen next year, but...
Yeah, I'm not sure what else, okay. The school committee negotiation Subcommittee, because we're already involved in this, and we've already started, Dr. Quick and myself would stay on that. School committee negotiation Subcommittee for the superintendent of schools, is there anyone who would be interested in that? Okay, Mr. Hayes, do we have a second person? And then I could, I would step back from that.
Oh, why don't you?
You want to do it?
It doesn't matter, you are, it doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter to me. You can do it. Go ahead.
You want three people? No, Mrs. Carroll, okay. There's a Mrs. Carroll. School committee executive session minutes, I'm going to be taking that over for Mr. Hayes. So I'll do that one. High school building committee, that's ongoing, and so myself and Mr. Hayes will remain on that. But I can't stress enough that if you'd like to come to the meetings, we'd love to have you, any of the meetings that we have, and that's really important, as we're getting into the nitty-gritty coming up soon. School committee sub, negotiation Subcommittee with the WTA, Mr. Marchese, he'll stay on that. Anti-bullying committee, Mr. Hayes. We'll sit on that. And we have legislative representative, and I think Mr. Hayes...
Can I get a job description first before I agree?
We can make it up as we go along.
Well, I will say that I do see Mr. Moselli, he holds office hours where I work once a month, so it might be convenient for me to be our legislative representative. And in addition, I do plan on attending the next Massachusetts Association of School Committee Conference like I did last year, so...
That would be good, because I think it's not out of your way where you see Mr. Moselli, and we would just be touching base about, is there anything we should know as a school committee? Is, what's going on in the state? Do you need phone calls?
Sure. And I do know it's beyond Mr. Moselli, it's also Mr. Murphy and Mr. Tar, sure, absolutely, absolutely.
But also Senator Tar comes to quite a few functions, and like I, I got ahold of him at town meeting, and he doesn't mind talking to you when he sees you. So that would be good. It doesn't mean that you have to go into the State House.
Sure.
Or anything like that.
Sure.
But if there comes a point where we need to go into the State House, you can let us know. All right, is that, I think that's, which one?
No, I just didn't know, did Mr. Marchese say, did he wanted, did he send any information? I just want to make sure.
He did, and that's, he wanted to stay on the...
Okay.
Yeah, he did. So that's all set. All right. Thank you. Our next item of business is the update on the feasibility study and the public meeting.
Just wanted to remind everyone that tomorrow night is the next public forum on the high school feasibility study, to have, be taking place in the auditorium at the high school from 6:30 to 8:30. The high school building committee met last week and voted on preferable options that we're moving forward with, and we will be reporting back on the second education planning session that we had, so please attend.
And if you can encourage your neighbors and friends and neighbors to come, it's really, really important for input. This is the chance we have to give you input, so we'd love to have you come to that. All right. Our next item is new business, and we have the superintendency evaluation. We're doing this a little differently, similar to last year, because under the new open meeting law, and the superintendency evaluations must be done in public. Anything that we talk about that we, like, I ended up having to write down some things. I have a folder here, and after we're finished, we'll all put ours, whatever we read from, if we read from something tonight, we put it in the folder, and we'll give that to Mrs. Benton.
Thank you.
But it's not the official, it's, it's like the rough draft. And our official evaluation will be Linda's minutes, the minutes, so we want to make sure that when we get the minutes back, we check them over, make sure that what we've said is, she's been doing a fabulous job, so I'm sure that won't be a problem at all. That'll be good to know. I just want to say for the public that the school committee categories for a superintendent's evaluation are relationship with school committee, educational leadership, general management, financial business operations, personnel management, and communications and public relations. But the superintendent also gives a list of goals, and they actually overlapped, which was, really made it a little bit easier to do this. And I have to say this, I hope everybody notices this, but in case you don't, I'm saying it. The first goal for Mrs. Benton on her list was student learning. And to me, that says it all. I don't even have to evaluate her beyond that. That says it all to me. That's her job, that's what she's concerned about, the student learning, and I found that very impressive. Leadership and planning, finance and budget, facilities and space utilization, climate and culture, and technology. So the school committee will be talking about all of these at different times. All right. There are two ways we could do this. We could each read whatever we put together and have, have us go, or, which seems, it seems to, I'm not going to say what it seems to me, or we could decide that we want to go, relationship with school committee, and then we go right around the room, and then we go to the next one. Educational leadership and general management, we go around the room. Which, yes, Dr. Quick.
I like the idea of, I prefer the idea of going with each bullet point and going through the school committee members' comments, and rather than each person going through, I think it's much more succinct if you keep it, okay, relationship with the school committee, A, B, C, D, and E, B, C, and then go in that direction. So that's my personal opinion.
Great. Do we have any other people?
I would agree with Dr. Quick.
Okay. That sounds good. Everybody's on board?
So that it'd be clearer for anyone trying to follow along at some...
Right, okay.
...future date, especially reviewing the minutes, to have all of our comments under one appropriate heading and...
Sounds excellent. Now, I think last year what I did was, we started with one person, the first one, the next one, we start with the next person, so that we're not all, at some point, you'll each get to say, to start out. And I also think there's going to be some redundancy and overlapping, and if, you know, if you've heard, if you're towards the end and everybody has said what you say, I think it's okay to say, you know, we agree, ditto, whatever, okay? So do you, you want Mr. Hayes? Okay, so we're going to start with Mr. Hayes, relationship with school committee.
Can you just mention why Mrs. Bonish won't be speaking?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't want anybody to say that.
Mrs. Bonish is newly elected to the committee, so she hasn't had the chance to work with Superintendent Benton beyond one meeting, so she will be enjoying this review along with the rest of you, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a question? I know that Mr. Marchese sent in his evaluation. Does somebody read his, or how does that work?
Oh, we just want to mention, we wanted to say, we're going to mention it, but we don't need to read it.
Okay.
He said, it's...
I have received it.
Okay. She has received it, yeah. And actually, when I glanced down it, it's really very, it's, we've all said the same, at least he and I basically said the same thing.
Okay.
So it's good. Yep, so he agreed, whatever, whatever worked out that way. Mr. Hayes, relationship with school committee.
Great, so I wrote most of this at 3:00 AM last night, so I hope it all makes sense now that I'm talking on television. But what I've done is I've just, I went based on, you know, the criteria, and I pulled out each bullet, and then I gave an example of why I felt that way. So relationship with the school committee. The superintendent does maintain a professional working relationship with the school committee and promotes a climate of mutual respect and trust. So a respect and trust must be earned, and Superintendent Benton has earned both my respect and trust. I've said it before, and I'll say it again, I feel Wilmington is extremely fortunate to have the best town manager and superintendent tag team around. The superintendent does provide agendas and support materials that allow for reasonable policy formation and informed decision-making at school committee meetings. This is my 15th school committee meeting, and with one exception, I have never seen this school committee postpone a vote because it felt the superintendent had not provided it with sufficient information. And I have asked the superintendent and the Director of Administration and Finance hundreds of questions over the past year during my pre-meeting preparation, and as a result, I have never cast a vote that I wasn't prepared for. And in addition to answering questions, Superintendent Benton is generally very responsive to my requests for information. And then finally, the superintendent does support and implement school committee policies and directives, and effectively communicates them to students, staff, and community members. The superintendent generally posts new policies and policy changes on the district website, often asking for public feedback while the policy is still in draft form. The policy manual is now posted on the district website, big thumbs up. Many of the more pertinent policies are placed in the student handbooks, which students and parents are required to read. And the superintendent's handling of the anti-bullying policy and plan deserves mention. It was a collaborative process through the anti-bullying committee. Public comments were sought, the plan was submitted to this date before the deadline. The district conducted a massive outreach effort to educate students, parents, teachers, and staff on the plan. And I think I'll end it there for now.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Okay, I'll go next. The superintendent is a master of collaboration, a 21st century skill requirement. She has an instinct for providing the exact information needed by the committee so that we can perform our roles as policymakers and overseers of the budget based on data and need. Joanne treats each individual member with respect and professionalism. She is eager to answer individual questions, to bring clarity, which allows each member to make their best decision for the children. As chairman, I feel grateful to be working so closely with Joanne without fail over this year. Whenever I have a concern, Joanne is already aware of the issue, and in fact, she has begun to rectify it or let me know the disposition of the issue. Communication is the root of our smooth relationship. Joanne works diligently to keep open the lines of communication. By operating with a no surprises model, the meetings of the committee run smoothly and effectively.
Okay, I hope you don't mind. What I've done with each section is I've given it a letter, and then, and then just the bullet points for what, what we were looking for. So relationship with school committee, I gave Mrs. Benton an A. As a school committee member, I feel extremely comfortable and rely upon the superintendent to make informed decisions that positively affect the quality of education for our schools. There is a great deal, I feel, a great deal of respect, I feel, between the school committee and Mrs. Benton. She provides the agenda, she, exactly like Mr. Hayes said, there's always the support material, there's never, very rarely is there an extra question that, you know, and she's always there, she knows exactly how to answer your question, each and every time. She supports and implements our policies, and she, you know, the website, the community website for the school system is top-notch, and she keeps that up to date. Now granted, she has a great support staff, but she, she is always making sure that that information is up there for everybody to be able to see it. So I've given her an A on that section.
Thank you. Mr. Vale?
Well, a lot has been said that I agree with. In fact, I agree with all of it. Let me just emphasize that I feel that Ms. Benton has established an excellent working relationship with the school committee. I always do feel prepared with materials and packets coming. Plenty of time ahead for me to have reviewed things and to have formulated some thoughts before coming in here. I am particularly impressed by her ability to fore-plan and the ability to, I guess, foresee what it is I'm going to ask. And recently, I had asked to put the Destination Imagination program on the agenda, and she had already scheduled it in and invited the town coordinators to an upcoming meeting, and I just thought that was excellent. She's been very responsive to all of my questions and comments, accessible in her office, accessible, very responsive with email questions that I've sent in, and I have no problem saying that she deserves great praise for the relationship that she's been able to put together with, with me specifically, and I would suggest with the whole school committee.
Thank you. Mrs. Carroll, this is tough to be the last person.
It's good for me. I give her an A, and I always think the communication for us all is very good, and she's always at everything for parents, for parents always know who she is, and that's a great support. I mean, I don't even remember who my superintendent was, but the parents and the kids all know who she is because she's always there. And to me, that's, that's A-plus.
Great, thank you. All right, the next, the next category is educational leadership. All right, and I put that together with general management. I don't know if people separated. Yeah, you separated.
I did, I mean, Dr. Quick, I don't know if you have anything, you're next in line.
Oh, I am. So you put them together, okay, so that, that leaves me, correct?
Yeah, I'll have you do educational leadership, and then I'll do it at the end.
Okay, that's fine. Educational leadership, I gave Mrs. Benton an A. She is always up to date, kept abreast of the latest developments in the field of education. I always feel like she's adding something new, and, you know, thinking outside the box for the 21st century classroom and just ways, not even just for 21st century, just ways to improve the system. You know, it's, she's not one of those, if it ain't broke, you know, don't fix it. It's always, it can be, it's great, but it can always be improved, and I love that about I feel, you know, and, you know, one of the issues about the educational leadership pieces, I also feel, you know, I'm sure Mrs. Benton would like to have every possible resource for us that is, you know, that is available, but unfortunately, with, especially in this, you know, with some of budgetary constraints, and, you know, you can't always get exactly what you want. But in lieu of that, you know, I definitely give her an A, because I feel that she's an exceptional leader for education. Thank you.
So based on the criteria here, I just, I do see and respect our superintendent as an educational leader. I do see very much Superintendent Benton taking a leadership role with respect to her peer group and with respect to what's going on out there in the educational world. I've been impressed by her focus on adapting and bringing 21st century skill sets into the educational curriculum and into the school district. She and I are on the same page with respect to, I think it's more than just reading, writing, and arithmetic going forward, and she's been able to articulate specific goals, specific skill sets, and educational programs that I just have sort of this nebulous feeling as to what I think an appropriate 21st century educational program should look like. She's actually been able to give voice to it and express it in PowerPoints and in policy, and it's an ongoing effort to implement, and it's going to take many, many years to do, but I respect her tremendously for, for going above and beyond that and clearly being at the forefront of what's going on in terms of developments in the field of education. So I think she has, is an outstanding educational leader.
Thank you, Mrs. Carroll.
I give her an A on that, too. I think she's right up, right up there, you know, especially just race to nowhere, getting us involved in this. So I give her an A-plus on that, too. She's...
Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
I think I'm going to hold my grade till the end, but I don't think it's going to be a surprise, but I'm, you know, okay. So educational leadership. The superintendent does make decisions with a focus on the needs of all students. As Chairwoman Kate had mentioned, her, her first goals for this year involved student learning. And I think she also follows very closely the district's mission statement, which says the Wilmington Public Schools will provide a student-centered education which focuses critical, which fosters, critical inquiry, enabling the individual to be a productive citizen, respectful of self and others, capable of adapting to a changing world and its technology. The superintendent does keep abreast of the latest developments in the field of education, which is a sign of effective leadership. Example, the superintendent's work chairing the high school building committee deserves mention. I replaced former committee member Higgins on that committee, so I joined a bit late. But from everything I've seen, the superintendent is handling this entire process extremely well. She is displaying true educational leadership in attempting to bring the 21st century high school to Wilmington. And superintendent is forward-thinking, for example, when it comes to digital textbooks. I remember last May, the committee heard something relative to what was happening in a math class at the high school, and I do believe I see us going in that direction eventually. The superintendent does consider curriculum evaluation and development, professional evaluation and development. and development, and student assessment as the formulation of short and long-range goals and objectives for our district. And then I just pulled from the district's, you know, strategic plan where she talks about professional development. Goal two of the strategic plan says, "Continue to provide varied and appropriate professional development opportunities for all staff." Goal one C of the plan, "Implement strategies to ensure that assessment data are used to inform instruction." And goal one A of the plan, "Provide a balanced, comprehensive K-12 curriculum as outlined in the Wilmington Public Schools curriculum protocol." So clearly, those things are present in our long-range strategic plan.
Good. Thank you. Two of the superintendent's personal goals for 2010, 2011 coincide with this area of educational leadership. It speaks to the superintendent's gift as an educator and value to this system that student learning is her top goal. Her data-driven system of curriculum instruction and assessment, coupled with professional development programs for staff grounded in best practices and reflective of state requirements, puts Joanne at the forefront of educational leadership. This past April, Joanne presented at a conference at Merrimack College on Education for the Future. And how surprised was I that during recent interviews, I heard three candidates comment on her presentation and that the reason that they were applying to Wilmington was because they wanted to be part of what she had to offer as an educator in the system. In Joanne's letter to accompany the survey for the latest strategic plan, she quotes President Eisenhower as saying, "Plans are nothing, planning is everything." I couldn't agree more with that statement. Her second goal regarding leadership and planning reflects this philosophy. All five plannings for this section, "Provide active leadership in town, identify economies, develop multi-year strategic plan, continue notes from the whiteboard, and expand the website," have been put into action and are showcasing Mrs. Benton's qualities as an educational leader. Okay, so our next item is general management.
Okay, general management. I give Mrs. Benton another A. I believe, you know, one of the biggest, as it states in here, the superintendent has the responsibility for the efficient operation of the school system. The school system, I feel, runs extremely efficiently, thank you, thanks to her management skills. She provides the leadership in development and completion of goals and objectives, and she has a strong understanding of the state and federal laws, DOE regulations, and school committee policies. Often sometimes better than some of the members, so thank you for that, Mrs. Benton. So I give her an A on that.
Thank you. Mr. Vale?
Let me just say that I really have no concerns with Ms. Benton's general management abilities and the way she runs the department. I think it's a very well-run department. I'll just point out that, to echo what Dr. Quick just mentioned, constantly searching for efficiencies and improvements, making us aware of grant opportunities and going after those. I know we're voting later this evening on the next green improvement grant, and so I think she's doing a great job with respect to the facilities, which isn't separately broken out on this particular form, but I know there are other questions about it. And just general oversight, I don't, I never received any complaints from any parents or phone calls or anything, so it just seems like it's a very well-run department, and I have no specific comments above that.
Thank you. Mrs. Carol?
I give her an A again. She's also done grants to put new classrooms in here, new studies for the kids. I mean, right there, that's right on the top of providing learning for our kids. So not, you know, so I give her an A on that, too. Thank you.
Mr. Hayes?
Well, I will say, unlike Mr. Vale, I do get complaints every once in a while, and then I go and I investigate the complaints, investigate. I ask a couple of questions of Superintendent Benton or Mr. Rogero, and it turns out the complaint is really without merit, so, but generally, I would say for every one complaint I get, I get five, you know, praises. So that's certainly nice. So, general management. The superintendent is responsible for the efficient operation of our school system. The superintendent does recognize the importance of all staff being aware of the goals and objectives of our system. The superintendent does provide leadership to the school committee in the development of our system's goals and objectives. And the superintendent is familiar with and has a strong understanding of state and federal laws, Department of Education regulations, and school committee policy. And then just specifically, I mentioned, the superintendent updated the school committee on the new open meeting law at our April 28 meeting, reminded the committee of the state ethics policy on our January 31 meeting, provided the committee with a copy of the annual Massachusetts General Law booklet, encouraged committee members to attend the Massachusetts Association of School Committee annual conference, and gave each member a book on best practices for school committees.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Anyone involved with Mrs. Benton appreciates her strong moral and ethical leadership style. She's viewed as an advocate for her faculty and staff. She continues to consult her leadership team, the town manager, the school committee, police and fire chiefs, to ensure that Wilmington Public Schools maintain a solid foundation educationally and financially while promoting a safe environment within the community. She is a true role model for her staff. She is in work from 6:00 to 7:00 each morning, more likely between 6:00 and 6:30 every morning. She attends multiple school activities and enjoys the showcasing of our students during their programs. In addition, she attends superintendent roundtables, conferences for her own professional development, and even presented at a conference this year. Then she attends multiple meetings during the evening and still comes to school early the next day. Her work ethic is beyond impressive. Thank you. Our next item would be financial and business operations. Mr. Vale, do you want to start with that one?
Sure. Let me just say that I think we all know how fiscally trying the last number of years have been, and I certainly commend Superintendent Benton for her ability to steer us and the department through the financial storms and such that we are the envy of just about every other public school district in the state, if not the country, if they knew about us, which they probably don't. But I think she's done an absolutely wonderful job managing the budget, working with her staff to pull together the budget on a timely basis, coming up with the presentations, keeping all of the relevant constituents and stakeholders informed and getting by and from them, including multiple conversations with the town side and town manager, Mike Kyra. And then presenting it and getting it approved by every board and panel, including us, that needs to approve it, and ultimately getting it adopted by the town at the town meeting. So I think it's an absolutely wonderful job, and also turning over every stone that she can think of, getting more grants and figuring out how to apply those and all these budget machinations of which I can't quite figure out, but some things are timing and they offset this, and it's refunded there, and it comes in this way, and this we got to use this year, but this we can push off and use some of next year. And I think she's, you know, I raise my questions about fiscal management, but I have only concerns, I just want to make sure we're following best practices. I just think it's a wonderfully run department, and I'm happy to, that she's on our side.
Thank you, Mr. Vale.
I agree with you, too. Mr. Vale, they've done a wonderful job. I mean, couldn't even imagine having to do all this with everybody and all the work is and all the planning and all the budgets. So for her and her team, they're doing a great job.
Thank you. Mr. Hayes?
Well, when we found out at the last meeting that even one of the elementary schools' salad bars was grant-funded, you know that we're really doing a good job going after grants. And I think, I'll speak to Superintendent Benton, but I did want to just recognize that obviously Mr. Rogero is Mrs. Benton's right-hand man and her secret weapon, right and left, right? No assistant superintendent this year, so you're on both sides, Paul. But just wanted to recognize your wonderful work as well.
Thank you.
So, financial and business operations. The superintendent does present the district's budget to the school committee in a manner which promotes our full understanding. And as a rookie, I must say, my main concern coming onto the board was, was I going to get all this, you know, 30 million plus, you know, budget? And I really think I have. And Superintendent Benton had Mr. Rogero give an overview of the student activity accounts prior to my first meeting, so I would have a better understanding before I voted. Superintendent Benton and Mr. Rogero answered a bevy of questions for me surrounding just about every financial report that's come in front of the board, including the student activity audit in September and the end-of-the-year financial fiscal report. Superintendent Benton ran a two-hour budget session in December, on December 4th, where she went through her FY12 preliminary budget and had key staff in the audience available to answer questions for the committee. Superintendent Benton also spoke on the budget in several other venues, including at the school committee's budget hearing on February 9th and in front of the finance committee on March 1st, and her presentations were always well-received. Superintendent Benton does craft a budget that takes into consideration the needs of the entire system based on a formal assessment process, and the superintendent does recognize that the need to promote the school system and gather community support for school finances is an integral component of the budget process.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Between Mr. Hayes and Mr. Vale, you've said just about everything I had, but I just wanted to add a couple of things. I have you in here, Mr. Rogero. Mrs. Benton chose wisely in her hiring of Paul Rogero. They create an effective team which presents creative ways to save money for the system. On her own initiative, even though our buildings are under the purview of the town, Mrs. Benton applied for and received a grant from the Mass Building Authority to defray the cost of new windows for the Shawshin School by thousands of dollars. Due to Mrs. Benton's leadership, Wilmington remains one of the few communities, I think it bears repeating, in Massachusetts that does not need to charge bus fees, athletic fees, high school activity fees, and so on. This is no small feat. Mr. Hayes and I were speaking to a person who had run for school committee in Billwica yesterday, and it's horrifying to hear the fees that they're having to institute as a school committee and what's going on in that town. And you feel almost embarrassed, but we're so happy, and it's because of Mrs. Benton's efforts. And her collaboration with the town manager remains a key element of her finance and business operations. I believe the superintendent, Mr. Rogero's help and the town manager, I think that that's what is working for our town, and it's very important to be recognized. Thank you. Okay, the next one is personnel. Oh, the next one is Dr. Quick. I thought it was less, sorry.
Although I really, it's pretty much ditto. The only thing, I just, you know, again, same as everybody else, I just, Mrs. Benton and Mr. Rogero do an excellent job in a way that I believe everybody can look at that budget, no matter who you are. And you know what the beauty is, too, is that if you notice when they, when she delivered it to the school committee and then the finance committee, every time it's tailored specifically to that group so that they can each understand it in their own way, which I think is really important. So, and so she does so in a way, gives us a budget that helps to maintain but allow progress. So it allows progress without straining the finances of the town, which is super important. So I gave her an A+ for that one.
Very nice. Thank you. Okay, our next one is personnel management. Would that be, are we over to you, Mrs. Carol?
Well, she takes, you know, I give her an A+ on this, too. I mean, personnel, she's there at everything, like we've always said. She looks at the school system as her own, and that's what we need. So, you know, I give her an A+ on that.
Good point. Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
Great. So the superintendent does approach personnel decisions in a nondiscriminatory and impartial manner. The superintendent does foster an environment conducive to good teaching. The superintendent is alert to issues which affect staff morale. The superintendent is actively concerned with a meaningful staff evaluation program. And the superintendent does keep the school committee informed in appropriate matters of collective bargaining, performance standards, professional development, and grievances. And just some specific examples, we've met a few times in executive session this past year, and I can't really talk about it, but, you know, for purposes of collective bargaining, for grievances. So I feel like we're, we are sort of, certainly kept in the loop. And also, the superintendent provided the school committee with all current contracts as well, which is something I found very helpful.
Okay. I veered off here a little because I thought I had kind of already covered this, and I went to Mrs. Benton's own goals for climate and culture, and just wanted to mention that each year Mrs. Benton sets, and it does overlap with personnel management. Each year, Mrs. Benton sets the direction for the school system on the opening day of school. This year, Marion Ryan and Margie Daniels provided anti-bullying training for all staff members. Parents were provided multiple evening meetings, and when the principals and superintendents felt more need to be done on the secondary level, more speakers and programs were arranged. Our bullying policy was one of only a few statewide, accepted by the Department of Education as an acceptable plan. The Wildcat Project was renewed and fit into the goal to find effective ways to reduce bullying incidences. Thank you. Dr. Quick?
In this section, I gave Mrs. Benton a B+. I feel that she informs us in appropriate manner of collective bargaining, performance standards, development, and grievances. I believe she is alert to issues affecting morale and provides a balanced staff development program. I do believe that there could be some improvement in approaching personnel decisions, one that optimizes morale and promotes strict decision-making when it matters.
Thank you. Mr. Vale?
I'll just pretty much echo what everyone said. I don't have any real issues here. I will appreciate, I will express appreciation to Superintendent Benton over her conduct as well as other committee members' conduct of the collective bargaining arrangements. I know we've had tricky, and this sort of interrelates with some of the other things I just said, but obviously, in tough fiscal times, we've managed to, you know, get through some, what I think everyone had expected to be relatively difficult, collective bargaining negotiations with relative ease and quick passage. I know that she's very aware of ongoing issues and communication with staff and other issues that could affect staff morale. The, and I'm very pleased with the ongoing professional education and professional development opportunities which she and the school committee have managed to establish for the teachers, including sort of the ongoing Wilmington University and other professional development opportunities which are presented to the teachers and staff.
Good. Thank you. Our next one is, our last one, communications and public relations. Mr. Hayes?
Sure. The superintendent does recognize that public awareness is the cornerstone for support of education in our community, and under goal number two of her goals for this year, she continues to showcase Wilmington Public Schools through a variety of media, notes from the whiteboard, press releases, newspaper articles, district website, et cetera. The superintendent does ensure that staff, students, parents, and the community are kept informed of the mission and accomplishments of the school system. And the superintendent does maintain a strong positive posture, which is needed in building public support for the system, and it's been mentioned previously by several school committee members, but I'll just say that I feel the superintendent works much closer to 80 hours a week than 40 hours a week. And I've probably attended more than 50 school functions over the past year, and Superintendent Benton was virtually at every single one of them. And she is certainly a strong positive presence in the school system.
Thank you. I focused on, in this category, on the high school building committee. As a member of the high school building committee, I'm compelled to thank Mrs. Benton for the leadership role that she has taken in this new process. She has worked like a Trojan as chair of the committee on the feasibility study, meeting on a regular basis with the state agency involved, a subcommittee of the high school building committee, leading two all-day visioning sessions to determine the educational direction, meeting regularly with the high school building committee, providing tours of the present high school for 17 individuals, and leading a series of public hearings. Mrs. Benton has put her heart and her soul into this project, and I'm very grateful, as is everyone here. Okay.
Ditto on that, Mrs. Kane. In this section of communications, public relations, I gave Mrs. Benton an A. She definitely maintains transparency in keeping staff, parents, and community abreast of especially the accomplishments of the school system. She is the face of the Wilmington School District. So, and just like Mr. Hayes said, she is everywhere. And I feel that that is, you know, that is extremely important, and, you know, as a couple people mentioned before, everybody knows her, and that doesn't happen in all. I don't believe that that happens in many school districts like it does in Wilmington. So as far as communication, public relationships go with the community, a definite A in that section. Thank you.
Mr. Vale?
I guess, as a captain, I sort of lumped a bunch of things in this category, but let me just say, there's a great job on communications. They've all been mentioned, but let me just reiterate, we have an excellent website with a lot of information presented on it, constant emails, telephone voice alerts, mailers, newsletters, surveys. surveys. We're constantly, I think, also asking for more people to come forward and participate because we'd like even more input. I know that the superintendent is working and doing the outreach because she's constantly trying to improve standards and continuously improve initiatives and programs. One suggestion which I've had, and it was sort of lumped in a couple of other places, is I would suggest, well, actually, I have two suggestions. One is that we work harder to develop and enhance our business partnerships, which was on one of these sheets, but I don't remember which one. And that would be, I know that there's a little bit of that ongoing, but I think there's great opportunities for internships and externships and working very closely with a lot of the great technology companies which are located in Wilmington and the broader area. And I'd also say that with respect to the use of technology, and I know we sort of go back and forth on this a little bit, I'm just unclear as to, and I know we're doing, I feel like we're doing a good job with integrating technology into the classroom and curriculum. I just don't have a sense for how to benchmark our efforts against what other school districts are doing or what's happening in other states or even in other countries, and make sure that we're using the technology that we have available to us most effectively. So, I, my gut says we're doing a pretty good job, but I just don't have a way of really assessing sort of who's doing the best job and how we compare to that. And I sort of put that under communications because it's a way that everyone is now communicating and moving on that way. So, I think that's about my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Vale.
Well, I'd like to give her an A on that, too. How about the Alert Now? I mean, we have Alert Now on everything. It's great, you know, half a day, the parents know. That's great communication. And that, her email is on the website, and you know, if you ever email her or call her, she will get back to you. You know, on personal, professional, any kind of level, any, your child's having a problem, anything. She's very out there, just like everybody said, she works 80 hours, she's always there, you can always get in touch with her, and I just think that's wonderful. So, communication-wise is right there.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hayes.
I think I already spoke on this.
Oh, sorry.
Would you like me to go again? I'm in a talkative mood tonight.
This is a long session, but it's a fun thing to be able to do and give somebody so many accolades. I just wanted to say one thing to kind of summarize up. The selectmen recently debated the need for our new upcoming town manager, new town manager, to be resident of Wilmington or not. And I think that Mrs. Benton proves that that requirement is definitely not necessary. Although Mrs. Benton does not live in Wilmington, no one is more visionary, supportive, and proud of our students, staff, and school system. And I want to thank you, Joanne, for your care and concern. You are a consummate educator. Does anyone have any other comments they'd like to make? Are we all?
Just in overall, I failed to mention this previously, you know, something that people might forget is, she's been doing all of this work without an assistant superintendent all year long. So, she's doing double the work. So, you know, just everybody to remember that because, you know, that's just more on her plate, and she still manages to not only, you know, do it all, but exceed expectations in most areas. Thank you.
And I'll just add that I believe most superintendents' goals are either three or four, and she always comes to us with six goals. So, maybe next year will be good. Yeah, maybe next year will be good, you can give us only three or four. Now, would you like to, yes?
I just wanted to say, people were giving individual letter grades, and I hadn't given mine yet, and I just didn't want to say, go on record, obviously, and say that, you know, for me, anyway, Superintendent Ben is an A superintendent. I just wanted to say that. And I also, I'm not going to go through them all, but I did create a list of things that the school committee covered under my first year that I think really, really shows that we're doing, we're doing a wonderful job, thanks primarily to Superintendent Ben's leadership. And so, while I won't list them all, I will submit them for the formal record.
Oh, excellent, thank you. Being an overachiever myself, but I would like to say that for me, as chairperson, working with Mrs. Benton, she is definitely an A-plus superintendent. And I think that it's horrible to say that an A's not enough, but for everything that we've said tonight, I really feel that, I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I'm thinking A-plus does the job. Because that would be so nice to be a headline in the paper tomorrow, that Wilmington has the A-plus superintendent. Does anyone disagree with me? No. Hate to put you on the spot, but I knew you wouldn't. It's just, I think you can tell, Joanne, how grateful we all are and how happy we are to be able to work with you. And we really, really appreciate everything that you do for the school system. Okay? Mrs. Carol.
The community should know that, too, that everything that you do for our children and go, you know, I know a lot of superintendents probably don't do half the stuff that you do, and you do, do a lot, you know, even at a little fourth and fifth grade book club, you know, she's there, she's presenting them fundraisers and stuff like that. So, I just, you know, A-plus for me, too.
And was this the year she was the Wilmington Wildcat?
A year in a row.
That's fantastic. Okay, yes. Would you like, please do?
I just want to thank the committee. This is a very awkward and uncomfortable process. But I don't take any credit for any of my successes. The successes that you speak of tonight have to do with an incredible leadership team, starting with Mr. Roggero, who is my right and left hand and is probably the best hire I have ever made. But I also want to include Marlene Potta, Director of Special Ed, and Neil Ellis in charge of technology because they, we all work together. And although you don't see them at the meetings, there's a lot of work that they're doing behind the scenes and my principals. We have a great administrative leadership team, and I thank them for making me look good. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I'm just going to pass this around, and if you put anything in writing, could you just put it into the folder and then we'll give it to Mrs. Benton?
Scribbles included?
Scribbles, whatever.
spelling mistakes?
No, if there's no words on the paper, words. Oh, and speaking of the green repair project, here we go. Under new business.
We need an official motion, which I have attached in order to send into the Massachusetts School Building Authority. And then Mr. Hayes, as the secretary, will sign it and we'll send it in tomorrow in order to complete the grant process.
So, we need a motion made by and seconded by, okay. At a duly-posted meeting of the Wilmington School Committee convened on Wednesday, May 11th, 2011, at 7:00 p.m., the following motion was made and seconded by the following members. So, a motion should say, this whole thing right in the middle? All right. Who'd like to make that motion? Dr. Quick, thank you.
I motion that the school committee confirm that the town manager is authorized to execute on behalf of the Town of Wilmington District the project funding agreement, Green Repair Program, for replacement of exterior windows at the Shawshine Elementary School with the Massachusetts School Building Authority, and make final binding decisions with respect to the proposed project pursuant to the Town Manager Statute, S.T. 1950, C. 592, Sections 12F and 12G.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Mrs. Carol. Thank you. All those in favor? Unanimous. All right, so it would be one, two, three, four, five, six in favor and zero opposed. And then Mr. Hayes will sign it. Good.
Thank you.
Excellent.
And one more motion.
Where is it? Oh.
I'd like to recommend that June 20th be the last day of school, a half-day for students, a full-day for staff. Hopefully, we'll have no more snow.
I don't think we ever had snow this late in the year, I'm not sure.
Superintendent question, Superintendent Ben? Superintendent Ben, can I ask a question, Chairman Kane? I just realized that it's, this particular day is a Monday, so we're having students come back after a weekend and spend a half a day in school, but that's something we have to do by state law. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct. Students have to be in school 180 days. Thank you for.
That was a good try. Good try, Robert. I think it's good that at last we're doing a half-day for the students thing. That's a respect to the staff in a way. All right, I'd entertain a motion to make June 20th the last day of school for the 2010-2011 school year. It will be a half-day for students and a full-day for staff. Mr. Vale.
I hereby move that June 20th, 2011, will be the last day of school for the 2010-2011 school year, and that it should be a half-day for students and a full-day for staff.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Mrs. Carol. All those in favor? Unanimous, Linda. Thank you. Okay. Do we have any public comments? Good to see you, thank you. No public comments. Other reports. This is where we discuss if we've, like, if you attended something and we didn't bring it up during the agenda, you can put that on another report. Do we have, we all set? Mr., okay, wait a minute.
I do have one, then.
Okay, good, Mrs. Carol.
I just totally. On May 19th, where the special ed is having a IEP reading at the library here, of course, I cannot find it.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, yep. And anybody is welcome to join, it's very good. They'll probably read IEPs, and there'll be questions answered. So, it's seven o'clock here at the library, May 19th.
Right.
Thank you. And it'll probably be on the website, right? And I think a paper just went home because I saw one. Yes, I did see that, too. I should have brought that, yeah.
Excellent. Okay, Mr. Vale.
I would just like to say, congratulations again to Mr. Ward Dillmore and all of the graduating seniors, and indeed, the entire Strings Orchestra, for a wonderful concert a week ago last Wednesday, I guess it was Wednesday or Thursday. It was wonderful. And we need a larger gym or auditorium or something because there's just not enough room for the hundreds of students that engage in it, as well as their friends and family to attend. But it was another wonderful evening.
Excellent. Okay. I'll just mention that I know, I've been trying for a year to get us to have a retreat with the Mass Association of School Committees, Mr. Gilbert. And it's going to go on a little bit longer because our vacations overlap in June. He was going to try and come in June, but it's not going to work out. So, in September, we're going to try, skip the summer, we're going to try to have him come in and just give us an overview of ways that we could be effective. And so, I just wanted to let you know that, that I'm still working on that, and we'll get that eventually. And correspondence, Mr. Hayes.
No correspondence tonight, Chairman Kane.
Okay. Future meeting dates and agenda items. We have May 25th. Will our retirees be coming that day or in June? Are we inviting them? Do we think?
If you get invited, I think, I'm not sure which date it is. We sent the invitation, it's all set. I'm not sure whether it's this one or the June one.
All right, good. We'll be having retirees at one point. Does anyone have anything to be put on the agenda? So, if you do, feel free to call and let us know. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Dr. Quick.
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second? Mr. Vale. Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.